Seventh, it is four thirty PM and we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Just going to remind you guys, a small crowd tonight, but this is a work session, so if you have not been invited to speak, this is not a time where we take public comment. Just a reminder to all three of you out there, so anyways, just want to get that in. All right, we're going to roll right downhill. We are having some mayors awards next week. Number two, we have a public hearing for consideration of plans and specs for the Flint River Trail, Phase One, South. Hey, Mr. Tisland.
This is utilizing additional funds that we had remaining from our previous project. We just completed a project here, shown in blue, connecting from the ramp behind Big Muddy's up to approximately Oak Street with a trail behind the barrier wall, and that was completed just here in the last month or so. We had grant funds, trying to get all my notes here, for that in excess of eight hundred thousand. A low bid came in at four hundred and forty thousand, so with remaining funds, we're looking to do an additional project before those funds expired. We do have REIT funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand remaining for construction, and we did enter into a contract with French Renniker for additional engineering in the amount of forty thousand to complete additional section. So they've put together plans for this green phase from Oak Street just to the, just short of the driveway entering LaMonte. They had an engineer's estimate of, get that here, approximately two hundred and thirty-one thousand for a ten-foot wide trail with a small retaining wall, fence, and a safety rail on the street side of that, looking to go out to bid this winter. Receive bids by December twenty-first and have construction next year, complete by June of next year, June twenty-ninth of 2018. So again, trying to utilize funds that we had remaining. We have, the REIT funds do not cover engineering, but we did, as I mentioned, enter into an agreement to cover the remaining engineering costs through remaining funds left over from the previous project, as well as some of the savings through capital improvement projects. Some of our bids came in under budget, and those would be used to make up that remaining fund.
Any questions for Mr. Tisland?
None for me, thanks.
So I guess just while we're here, that would essentially complete the majority of Flint River Trail for the city, other than this remaining red portion. The yellow is existing, that goes around Case and on the levee, and the blue is what we just constructed with yellow connecting down to the riverside park, so getting closer to completion of that trail, which would be a good project to have done.
Good job. We're good, guys? Number three, consideration of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the West Avenue, Mason Road, urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, first reading on that one.
This is, well, this is a continuation of the process. That was approved last meeting, the urban renewal plan was approved. This is setting up the area specifically for the Park West subdivision, which is currently Outlet Three of the Swisher subdivision, as a TIF district to move forward with this project. This is the second of three, I guess, items along the process. The final would be in a development agreement, setting out the terms for use of funds, but this, this process just sets up this area, just this one lot as a TIF district based on the urban renewal plan, and allows for the use of TIF funds in this area, as allowed by Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. So what we proved previously was an urban renewal plan that highlighted a larger area, and it talked about this specific project within that urban renewal plan, and now this, this process sets up this, just one lot, that's been brought forward and identified in that project as a TIF district. And then again, we'd go after this is considered for approval, if it is approved, then a development agreement would be considered by the council for the terms of the project.
All right.
Mr. Cahill's here, if you have any questions or any other details as well.
Remind me again, Eric, what was the maximum limit dollar-wise?
It was three hundred and fifty thousand was the maximum to the developer.
And it's going to be sixteen lots?
Yeah, and I have the plans here. It was a, shown as a sixteen-lot subdivision connecting from West Avenue down to the south. Some of the lots on the western portion, it is zoned R2, would be allowed as condos or duplex condos on that side, the remaining being single-family.
Okay. I see the developer here. Sir?
We have to have a handout.
We love handouts, Dan. Thank you.
You're going to make a lot of notes.
Those are nice-looking pens, too, Dan, by the way.
This isn't considered bribery, do we have?
Under two ninety-nine.
Thank you, James.
Although you better check the price tag on it, make sure it is under two ninety-nine.
Okay, Dan Cahill, fourteen fourteen, Hillary, Burlington, Iowa. Most of you have received one of my handouts at prior meetings. Now, this is just a little bit different, not a lot different, but we have a new council person and another council person in waiting, so I thought that I would give you some of this information again. And I, and what I, what I tried to do was go down, make a list, why this project that I've been working on since June is a good project for Burlington, and why it should be approved. I know there's been a lot of controversy about taxing increment districts, and I don't know why, because people seem to be convinced, when you say tax increment financing, people seem to think the city is pumping a bunch of money in this, and I'm just going to get filthy rich on it, and I shouldn't, and I'm using other people's tax money. Well, that's absolutely the farthest thing from the truth, so I'd like to call this tax increment development. I think people would understand it a little bit better that way, because what this is is a development project, and it is for the city Burlington. So I made a list, and where the right hand there, I put, I put benefits to the city, one through twelve, and minuses to the city, i.e. possible objections, and there, put some notes in there. If you think there's an objection to that particular topic, put it in there, ask me about it later. I'm in the phone book, and I'm happy to come to hear any, any meetings you may have. If you have questions about any of these things, I'm going to mention today. Number one, project will add sixteen new and taxable and needed lots to the city of Burlington. Now, I know the Chamber of Commerce has been asking for more residential development. In fact, I've even attached to these pages here, a letter from, or article in the Hawkeye from last year, really, December twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen, about this tax credit program that I'm trying to work under here. And, and it quotes Jason Hutchison as saying, "Future business growth and our ability to attract and retain workers." It's important, we have housing. Number two, the total cost of this project is five hundred thousand dollars, paid in full by myself and my wife. The city has absolutely no money, not one penny, in this project. That's often misunderstood by people, and I don't know why, but they can't seem to get that straight. Number three, this project conforms to the nineteen ninety-nine city development plan for a north-south street connecting West Avenue and Mason Road, very important for Burlington, and I've attached to my handout today, a copy of the page from that city planning report that shows where they wanted to grow. This was nineteen ninety-nine, so this is a twenty-year-old idea. The city hasn't made any progress on this plan for twenty years. Now we hope to make some progress. In a, in any event, my proposal conforms to this plan. Number four, planned street, which is approximately my share of it, would be eight hundred and fifty feet, and it will help solve the current traffic overload on Willow and West Avenue if and when completed south to Dill Street. And I've attached a, a copy of my plan, and I've attached, well, this, the plan you have on the screen, if, if Eric could move it a little farther that way, well, you see where Dill Street is. My land does not go quite to Dill Street, it's within two hundred feet of Dill, and hopefully, if you could show the whole, the whole thing to Mason Road, Eric, it would be, it would be helpful, because that's where the city wants a street to be, or has at least in the past, and it's a great place for a street to be. All right. Number five, total cost of the infrastructure, that's the engineering grading, the street itself, sewer, water, electrical, all underground, all, of course, in city code, costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the, that's the estimates I have, anyway, right now, from clinger in us, so shit's, you know, things happen, so you get, you know, you're not always within budget, but that's what the budget for those items are. And, and the other interesting thing, I think, the city owns the infrastructure upon completion, inspection, and acceptance by the city. I don't own, I don't own the street, I don't own the water system, I don't own the electrical system. In fact, if I build a house there, I have to pay like a thousand dollars for building permit to hook up, to hook up to the city. Doesn't make sense, but, and the city can waive that, by the way, but I don't think...
Are you thinking of building?
Well, I hope somebody builds. I may have, I don't plan on building houses, but if I did, I may have to build one or two to get it started. You have to do that in a subdivision, to just get it started, so people get the idea and see what's going to be there. Number six, and this is, on the traffic in that area, I was going to mention, if you don't think there's traffic in the area, that this could help solve, go out in that area around three or three-thirty in the afternoon. You can't even get onto West Avenue. I mean, it's pandemonium. So number six, large real estate tax increase to the city, the county, and the schools. This seven point nine-four acre parcel currently produces taxes total of three hundred and twenty-eight dollars per year. Now that's divided between the city, this, the school, and the county. The city's share of that, as, as I show there, is a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-six cents per year. That's what you're making on the land right now, and I've attached a letter from the county treasurer that substantiates that claim. Hundred and twenty-six, forty-six a year, sounds like it's not very much money. Now, the city, all right, the city-county assessor estimates that if we get sixteen houses built out there, the taxes when the project is completed fully taxable will be a hundred and eighteen thousand a year. That may be, it may not be, it's a rough guess, but it's a rough guess by Matt Warren, Warner, our city-county assessor. So I mean, that's what we're going by, it's not my figure. The Hawkeye was doing some checking on things, and that's the figure that was in the paper. Now, the city's share of the hundred and eighteen thousand, which is thirty-nine point four percent of your tax bills, if you look on your tax bills, you'll see that, is forty-six thousand, seven hundred, five hundred and seventy-four dollars a year. So it's a substantial increase from a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a year to forty-six thousand dollars a year if this project goes through. Pretty important to the city, I would guess. Now, during the ten years, this is a ten-year project, or perhaps sooner, you know, if, if there's a great market for housing, modest, what the state calls workforce housing, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range and under, it could develop faster than ten years. The first one that I did twenty years ago, we sold those lots in three years. Worked out very well for the city. So in the meantime, during this ten-year period, the city will receive a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars in cash, in tax set-aside money. This is cash from the LMI, which is Low and Modern Income Housing. The state code that we're operating under, this 403, provides that of the infrastructure costs of three hundred and fifty thousand, the city gets thirty-eight point four percent back as houses are built and the houses go on the tax rolls. Well, that totals a hundred and thirty-four four, that's where that figure came from. The developer gets sixty-one percent, or whatever the difference is. So the city is actually going to be getting more in this, this set-aside than they would if this were a fully taxed, immediately taxed project, because you know, people build a house, they're going to get a three-year tax abatement, and, or a ten-year tax abatement if they phase it in, which is four hundred and twenty percent of the taxes for that period, that ten-year period. So the interesting thing about this hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars that the city is going to get, is that the city exclusively gets it. The school doesn't get it, and the county doesn't get any of it. It's exclusive to the city under Code Section 403. It's really, this is a really interesting program, being used all over the state of Iowa, except southeast, well, no, southeast Iowa, Fort Madison has got a project like this. So that's interesting, the city gets it all, but they have to use it for low-rent housing. And I hope that it could be used, I, you know, Charlie's Block Grant idea, I think, is super good for Burlington, and I would hope some of that hundred and thirty-four thousand could be used to get rid of some of these tracks, some of the tracks that we're having, bringing our housing stock is going into the tank. It's really bad in many neighborhoods, and I think some of this money, it's, it's the city's choice what they do with it, but not mine, but I really think it'd be interesting if they could do that. And I think the block grant. Okay, number eight, it's also important for jobs, 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 jobs. You know, it requires a lot of material and a lot of labor to put in a subdivision and build sixteen houses. I mean, and I, I don't know what the, I estimate, we know it's three hundred and fifty thousand for the infrastructure, and I thought if you build sixteen homes and the cost with the materials is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I just guessed at that, it could be more, it could be a little less. Two million, eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars to do that. That's good for the city, to have that money circulating in our suppliers. Number nine, this project is being developed as a workforce housing project within the designated urban renewal area. This is again under Code 403, it has to be within a urban renewal area. This designation provides building contractors tax benefits to encourage moderate-priced housing. That's what we're doing here, we're trying to encourage moderate-priced housing. I, I don't think we need any more six hundred thousands of dollar housing, we get plenty of those, we get a lot of lots that are going to cost a hundred thousand, too. Now, those are, and there'll be a lot of people will be happy to hear, those are benefits that don't flow to Dan Cahill, they flow to the builders that build the houses, and they really are super good, and it is a lot of encouragement to builders, because if it's this district as we have here, and it has been designated as a workforce housing district, which the state has to approve, then the builders receive ten percent of all of the materials they put in these houses, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So ten percent of a hundred and fifty thousand is fifteen thousand. That's what the builder will get, if he can build a house, a modest price, sell it for under two hundred and, I think it's fifty thousand dollars. He gets fifteen thousand back from the state. He's got to agree to build, I think it's four houses in three years, so a builder can do that, and that, that's super good for our builders. They need that encouragement. In addition, if it's a workforce housing project, the builders get six percent, they get their, the, the taxes that they pay on these materials, the six percent sales tax, they get that back from the state. It's, it's quite a program. The fifteen percent, or the ten percent that I said for material, it doesn't come back as cash, it comes back to the, a tax certificate or something, which they can then sell into the market if they want to, you know, the, those kind of certificates. That's a change in the law. It used to be they, they had to just use that money against their own tax computations. Now they can sell it, which they can get ninety-five percent of the value of that usually on the open market for those kind of certificates. Okay, number ten, Park West LLC, that's a developer, that's me and Kathy, shoulders all financial obligations for the completion and success of the project. That's kind of important. The city has absolutely no liability here, and I put down on this thing, think recession and real estate bust. I mean, it does happen in real estate, as we all know. Sometimes it goes down, sometimes you don't help. It reminds me of the Flin Hill Manor project. I think it's the greatest project that ever hit Burlington. I think it's wonderful that the city did that, took a lot of guts for the council to buy and to do that, and they took a lot of static for that. Just so happens, it was at a time when the real estate market went into the tank, and now look at the benefits we're getting from it. I mean, this is a long-term, this is a long-term project, just as that land was a kind of a long-term project. I think it was, it's one of the best projects the city has ever done. So, number eleven, no, this is, then this is the one that kind of gets, gets my goat, because people have, are just, they just don't understand this program, and I can't get the word out to them. That's why I come here with these outlines, hoping that some of this information will show up in the paper. It never does. It never does. I've got all the articles that have been written about this project, and not one of these points has been mentioned, not one. Number, number eleven, no current taxpayer in the city will pay higher taxes because of this development. Only the developer and future owners of lots in Park West subdivision will pay the costs associated with this project. That's it. And I put over, well, I get a note to myself, Leon will be happy on this.
No, he won't.
That's probably true, too.
Don't kid yourself.
But I, I was out of town when you had your meeting last week, but we read it, the paper on the computer, and it says that, he said, "Well, I'm not going to be paying any taxes, my taxes shouldn't have to go up because of what Cahill's doing up here." Well, he doesn't have to worry about that. Number twelve, and I think this is kind of, this is an important one also, and I think the council in Burlington should be pretty serious about this. Residential development in the city of Burlington, rather than in the county or neighboring cities, is extremely important in expanding our tax base and tax receipts for the city. Now, I have a list of all of the lots that are for sale in Deboing County, and I'm telling you, there are a lot of lots, not just for sale, but for development, that have been developed in West Burlington and in other small towns, and out in the county. Not good for Burlington. Used to be, the city's had some control on that, because they couldn't get water out there. Then, once we got rapid water, all hell breaks loose about building in the, in the county. Why wouldn't you? Your taxes are thirty-nine percent less on exactly the same house. So, and I know when I was here, oh, about a month ago, the council could just approve that not, the final plat and, and, well, the preliminary plat and the final plat of a, of a five-lot subdivision is going to be on Summer Street, just outside the city That's the competition for my sixteen lots, because the taxes are so much less in the county. Okay. I, I just, and I, and I, and I give you these outlines, I'm hoping that you'll look at them, and, and I know you can't vote on it tonight, but I hope that if you read it and you have any questions about any of those twelve points, that you'll call me, or anybody else calls me. If I could get the information in the paper, then I could get some calls from these people or emails, and I could try to explain them, to them, some of the things I put in here. Now, I call a plan like this a ten, a ten-year, five, seventy-six, so that's, it's a little bit on the old side to be doing a ten-year real estate project, see? But, and I call it, this project, kind of delayed gratification. Someday the city's really going to love the taxes that are coming off this property, and it might be ten years, it might be five years, might be four years, I don't know. But that's delayed gratification, and, and investment, it's, this is an investment, of course, for us, and we hope that it works out. If it doesn't, we take the financial fault, the city does not, so everybody can be assured of that, okay?
Thank you for taking your time coming down.
You bet.
Hey, don't think you're going to get everything you want just because you brought a pretty lady with you. Maybe go somewhere with that.
No, but it should help.
It always helps, my friend.
Jim, do you see anything here that you object to or refute, or?
No.
No?
Counsel, we good to move forward, or?
You're smarter than I am.
Okay.
I don't know, I'd refute that.
Jim?
Basically, I'm in favor of plans like this for two reasons. The infill, I'm always interested in infill. I was, like I was mentioning to Linda, first time, ever since I lived in this town, I drive around and here's a cornfield or a bean field right in the middle of town, it's just a compute. So the infill part is really good, and the LMI fund is a really good point from my perspective. My only issue is, if this is approved, then the rest of the people are going to want to do the same thing.
Say it again, the what?
The, the others are going to want to do the same thing, it's going to be a precedent that we're setting.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, I was going to bring that up. This just refers to the one section.
Right.
So these other two owners, if they come forward and they say, "We want the same thing,"
So I guess what I'm...
I won't be heard then.
The new people are going to have to be okay with us setting this precedent, is what I'm saying, because they're, the new three are going to be the ones that, and you two, in two years or four years, are going to have the same thing coming.
Well, for me, the, the math adds up. I mean, if you, you know, I, one of the things I campaigned on, it was growing our tax base, and for me, when you look at the previous development we did utilizing the tax increment financing, it's a pretty good payoff. I mean, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand, once that bond was taken care of in two thousand and six, the figures that Dan showed us and verified, I verified, two point one million dollars in property tax since two thousand and six. And when you look at it that way, yeah, are we playing loose with the rules, possibly, as far as what TIF development is all about, maybe, it depends on your interpretation. By the same token, that's, we're in the competition with every other city in America for these, these type of funds. So for me, the math adds up. I don't, I don't have a problem going forward, using that, that mentality. And also, we're providing, you know, the problem with tax abatement is an undeveloped field, most people aren't going to build one home if they, it's not a street or sewer hooked up for it. So it's not like an infill project when you're, when you're in a city block that already has those pre-existing items. So I, I don't really have a problem with it going forward, as far as others coming forward is knocking on our door. Bring it. I'd like to see our city grow.
Okay. Well, that's all I have to say.
The real...
I'm keeping the pen.
Keep it, you can keep it.
I vote no.
Actually, I, I wanted one of those, I wanted one of those pens, sir, I never got one. All I get is the laugh now. I knew you'd turn on me, it was just a matter of time. Are we good then?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, guys, we're moving forward then. Thank you, sir. Next, we have number four, it's a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street right-of-way, located between Valley Street and Marcus Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland, do you have?
No changes from previous reading, again, just vacating the portion between the school and the parking lot, unused portion of city right-of-way, would go to the current owner of the property.
You guys want to bump that? Do you want to, do you want to do a...
Yes, let's waive it.
Please. Okay, what about number five, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Higher Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances, and deleting Chapter 127 Vehicles for Higher Drivers in its entirety. Chief, you don't have anything to add to that, do you?
That's just my opinion.
You guys, are we cold bumping that then, too?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? That seems like it would take forever. We're going to get you squared away, chief, give us, give us a minute, we're going to get her done. Okay. Number six is a resolution approving the final plat of our Revue Estates subdivision. Mr. Tisland?
This is continuation of the project Scott Zeizer's looking to do there off of Cliff Road, just to the north of Zeizer's Greenhouse. With the short week last week, we did place this on the agenda, we are still waiting for, from some information on the infrastructure, some testing and results, so if that doesn't come back to the city in a positive manner by probably Wednesday, this will not remain on the agenda. So we still do have to get that information from them as well, but with the short week last week, wanted to bring this forward in case we did get that in place. But with the short week last week, wanted to bring this forward in case we did get that in place. Again, this is a 25-lot subdivision with two new roads, Arbor View Drive and Harvest Lane, with zero lot line development. Lots one through, uh, what is it, 15, um, would be duplex condos with one half on each individual lot. Does reserve an outlot on the north side of that cul-de-sac that the owner has to maintain a letter of credit for. Once the property to the north develops, that street is required to connect to the north and be installed. He chose to, not installed at this time, but would be required to have a letter of credit on hand for that. The detention pond on the south is, was installed by the developer. That's one item that is under review as well, making sure that meets all our criteria. And then lots 18 through 21, uh, under the previous preliminary plat approval, with those being over the 750 feet and not having the second access to the north at this time. Those do have to have a residential sprinkler system that the developer agreed to if those are constructed before a through-street is connected to the north. So, those are the, the, I guess, preliminary items on this. Preliminary plat was approved in June, uh, the, by the city planning, or the city council. And then this is under a PUD ordinance, Arbor View Estates, PUD, and does meet all the requirements of that. So, the primary item right now is the infrastructure, making sure the testings all come back on that. If it does not, if we don't get all that on hand, then it'd probably be the following meeting that this will come back on.
Eric, is that drainage or is that on concrete?
On everything at this point, I think. Maybe Nick can, as far as what information you guys require to accept, we would need a resolution accepting the infrastructure and everything.
Prior to leaving last week, I had a conversation with Jesse. We had not received any information. We require core samples on the testing for the concrete to determine thickness and to determine on what their air slump and whatnot were. So, we haven't received any of that information from the engineering firm that they, that Scott Zeizer was using. So, until we hear back about that, we won't accept that infrastructure.
You have stormwater detention issues, or?
Correct. As you can see, the stormwater detention pond right there, its outlet is unfortunately on Sunnyside Avenue. So, it discharges out onto the road, follows the curb line and then fall, goes into an intake. There is very limited storm sewer intakes or any infrastructure at all off of Sunnyside. The requirement would have, the closest thing nor, is, is north of the subdivision. And there's a break point where things start to go north and then versus south. After looking at it, it probably would have been in the, in a better interest to have some sort of storm sewer brought in and have the detention pond put in a different location. But there is, the, uh, the, the intake inside of the detention pond sits low enough now that it will release water too frequently, in my opinion, onto Sunnyside. So, we're working with Scott to try and get that raised up, so it will only do it on major rain events. But storm sewer off of Sunnyside is an issue. And so I think that we probably will at some point.
Not just with this development?
Not just this development specifically.
So, this is going to help things. How much of a rain event would it take, under, I guess we can't figure that out.
Under, right now?
Yeah.
A half-inch rain would probably have water run for, for a day.
A half-inch? Really?
The, the biggest concern is where you have the, the tube that drains out of it, the height within the detention?
Yeah, you have the, the intake within the detention pond needs to sit higher. And I know that we've, we've corresponded with both the developer and the engineering firm.
So, the idea is it's supposed to absorb in the ground before you get your intake?
And the rest of the, in terms of this compared to the preliminary plat that was approved, the height, does the drainage work off of the, off of the lots the way it was originally designed?
Well, the preliminary plat, it meets that. It's the construction design, some of those criteria. The, there were some areas on the backside, I think in the northeast corner, that were lower and they were bringing in some of the, for some of the basements to try and fill that back in.
There was original, a preliminary or an original drainage plan that was submitted. I know that Jesse, the city engineer, has reviewed a revised drainage plan and they are beginning to dig some basements and they're trying to put some fill back there. In order to comply with what their previous drainage report would be, they'd have to bring in a, I don't know, a lot of dirt to be able to make that fill work. I don't, I'm not overly concerned if they were to fix the issues that they had in front of them, that there won't be any excess water created onto the, the property owners to the east, more so than that was already there.
But they do have to bring dirt in to that, those back lots?
I think they already have.
Enough to meet the requirements?
I have no, I would be able to answer that now.
Is that part of getting to where you have it?
That's part of Jesse's review is the stormwater plan.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dean.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, well, we'll belong to the consent agenda. Number one, a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for the 2016 HMA resurfing project. Nick?
Uh, this project is finally getting completed and shut out. Uh, this was started last fall and then began again this spring. It's been complete for some time. But there was some questions on the quantity counting for, for the asphalt, both in thickness and the, the tons used. But as you can see here, there's a final payment of 39,000. And then release of $0.00 in 30 days. So, the engineer's estimate on this project was 506,000. The total as-built cost is 533,501 dollars. So, a little bit over budget. Some of that comes in the quantity adjustments that happened because of the additional asphalt that was laid. And in this project, Plain Street, Parkway Avenue, Ironwood, were all completed. So, I recommend approval.
And Plain part of it had to be resurfaced?
Correct. They came back and they redid that. It was, it was fairly bumpy on the
Right.
southbound, um, just south of division. So, that has been redone.
You guys good?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Number two, resolution approving final acceptance of the 2016 former Dresser Rand Site Cleanup Project. Mr. Tisland?
This, again, is closeout of this project. Again, J. Petticord of Des Moines was awarded the contract for this. There were a couple minor change orders which added to the cost some additional contaminated soil category increases and screening material. And then there was a couple others that, there was less quantity that they were able to reduce the cost. So, the total cost was 617,930. There is some work to be done on that site as far as a, a city project for some of the stormwater on the west side. The, I think there's a storm line that runs under that, that a intake would be needed to properly drain that site. The other intakes would be, need to be brought in two or three feet of fill to get to, so that, that seems to be the best option. I've had some discussions with Public Works about that project to eliminate that ponding on the west side of that site.
Still there is today.
And the standing water will be there until we get an intake. The, the height of that land is just the only way that you're going to get it to where it drains is to have an intake that'll carry it with, into the stormwater system. Now, that's a project that you kind of guessed in the 20, maybe $20,000 range? So, it's not a significant project, but it is a project that needs done for that to drain adequately.
So, that it's marketable?
It would make it better. But part of the question has also been, if you put in a drain at, at this point and you ended up marketing it and having someone purchase it, you may end up putting the intake in a position that's different than where they would ultimately want it. So, for us to put it in, we may end up spending money that is kind of a waste of money. But absent it being sold, it needs done. So, it, it's something that we're looking at as most likely we're going to be bringing forward a project to spend, to, to do that, recognizing that it may ultimately not be in the ideal location for whoever may use it in the future. But it needs done.
To me, it's not a waste.
Yeah, it needs done.
It's come a long way, though, baby.
Eric, do we have retention on this?
We, I think we just have the bond on it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we've, we've paid him off?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, I guess one note on it, it is in the land recycle, recycling program. Talked to Impact 7G on that. Uh, there, we did get a letter from the DNR on a couple items just through our work plan that they're addressing. DNR had some change in staff, so it's, part of it was just clarification for the new staff. But hopefully, um, once all that gets addressed and they accept that, that we can get the no further action letter here probably late winter. And at that point, I think the only restriction we have to do is a restrictive covenant on no residential housing on the site. But otherwise, he felt that everything should be able to be addressed and get the no further action letter from the DNR.
You guys good?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Whenever I drive past there, I'm just reminded of how far that area has come along, man, what, what blessed it is just to be at this point. Number three, a resolution approving an application for funds from the transportation alternatives, alternatives program for the West Avenue Trail. Mr. Tisland?
This is, uh, project we're working with Public Works on, but looking to apply for tap funds for the section of West Avenue Trail between Roosevelt Avenue and Terrace Drive. We currently have this in the budget. I think it's FY '20 as an identified project with grant funds being part of the funding source for it. We don't have grant funds at this point, so this would fill in that gap of having grant funds. But this would connect up the existing trail on West Avenue. The yellow portion is what is constructed. That connects up from the hospital around the Recplex, down West Avenue to Roosevelt. And then there's the gap along the south side of Notre Dame and US Bank. And then it picks up behind Fairway Food Store. There's a, a foot trail that connects up to Edstone. And then we do have funds secured for the north side of Mason Road, connecting from Edstone over to Haskell Street. So, this gap is a kind of a key connection to get from residences on the east side of this trail that'll be constructed hopefully next year. Edstone over to Roosevelt Avenue would include some signalization on Roosevelt Avenue as well as a crossing on West Avenue. Looking at the cost estimate here. It was 267,000. That includes a 10% contingency as well as engineering cost. We did have local match identified in CIP, 35,000. Also using 18,000 from Walmart Healthy Communities Grant that was for improvements on the Roosevelt Crossing and Meyer Mount, under 500 from the ADA Transition Plan. So, this would cross West Avenue and then have a retaining wall on the backside of the fence there that Notre Dame just installed and have a 10-foot wide trail going up to Roosevelt, Roosevelt Avenue with an improved crossing on Roosevelt as well.
Nick, has, have there been surveyors out plotting out this long Mason Road?
Yeah, we have a new staff member on hand, so you maybe haven't recognized it. But we've had some staff surveying Mason Road, so it's currently under design, hopefully to be let sometime this spring.
Oh, yeah. Good deal. Thanks.
Counsel, you guys good?
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
But this is only an application for funds, correct?
Yeah, correct, yep.
So, how soon are you going to know on the application for that? How soon would that?
Is that this? Due December and?
It's due then. When does the region take those up and consider them? Do you remember, Jim, you sit on?
I'm not on the committee, subcommittee anymore, so.
February, March timeframe?
I think that sounds right.
So?
Yeah. And it's scored, so.
Kind of depends on what else comes in.
Who the other applicants are.
Mm-hmm.
Okey-dokey. All right, we good?
Yes.
Number four, resolution approving energy efficiency, uh, efficiency plan agreement, addendum between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Huckleberry Hotel at 3001 Wingard Drive, Suite 130, Burlington, Iowa for purchase of two Level 2 charging systems and one Level 3 station. Piano Man.
Jerry Parks, 2729 South Main, chairperson for the Renewable Energy Committee. This, uh, this document is the final link in the Alliance Energy Bright Ideas Grant Program that funded our original five charging stations and then this extra three. This is simply a, an agreement between Fund City and Burlington stipulating their responsibilities. Basically, all the other charging stations were required under the grant to be open and free to the public for a five-year period after installation. And the only difference between this contract and all the other contracts is that since a fast charger uses so much electricity so quickly, they are allow, changing the contract just slightly to allow that particular charging station to charge a fee for the use of the electricity. The other two that Fund City is installing will still be covered under the five-year free to the public as a way of kind of increasing, you know, encouraging the transition to electric cars. And the project at Fund City is moving right along. They are putting in infrastructure for the three charging stations. And they're also adding additional conduit, feeling that there may be a need for even more than the three that they're going in right now.
That's cool.
So, things are, we're real pleased. Things are moving right along.
You guys are pretty pleased about that, aren't you?
Yeah.
That's a good deal, though. Good, good stuff.
Yeah, we're happy, huh?
Where are these going to be located, actually? I'm not familiar with Huckleberry Hotel.
Okay, um, there, it's changed a little bit and I, I can't honestly tell you the specific locations, you know, at Fund City there.
I was going to ask, too, but, so that's, you're not sure if that's going to be on their side where they're building new?
Yeah, it's part of the.
It will be on that side. Okay, okay.
Where Hampton is.
Good job. You guys good?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. Discussion items, we have treasures report. Annette? Please and thank you.
Okay, I just realized I didn't give you guys June 30th again, but nothing has changed since.
I can't hear you.
There, is that better? Okay, I just realized that you guys do not have June 30th, but it has not changed since last month. The auditors are still going over the numbers, but nothing has changed. So, in the packet was October's treasures report. I guess the biggest thing that I'd probably point out is if you're looking at the capital projects, there's lots of projects going on that are negative right now and that's just timing issues between the funding sources and draws from, and reimbursements that we haven't received yet. And so we've had some pretty big projects going on. But other than that, I mean, we're moving right along and there's some things that are wrapping up, like the trail. The first phase of the south, south trail is wrapping up and looks like Agency Street's getting pretty close on that on the west side.
Questions, Annette?
It's hard to look at your fund balances. For those who are not quite familiar with how things work, as you look through expenditures and revenues to date are revenues, major categories like property taxes two times a year? And we did get our first significant check would be in the October one?
Yes.
But none of the transfers have occurred. We do transfers twice a year.
Which will be December.
And so you're going to see the bulk of the money that would come into, say, like the general fund doesn't show that, show there because we won't have that first half of transfer occur until the December timeframe and then the second half would be in June. So, it's hard to make those numbers look right on a year-to-date perspective for revenues. But the expenditure side of, a good chunk of those do look a little bit closer to what you would expect to be for 33% through the year.
Correct. And then again, there's some funds, like our internal service funds are always a month behind as far as revenue goes because we bill the next month for the month before. And so that doesn't really true up until the end of the year.
We're good?
Thank you.
We're good. And so are you, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Okay. Okay, next we have appointments. We have two withdrawals. So, and we have one that has shown interest, I believe that has to be worked in. Kyrie Duckett will be one of the replacements and we do have another replacement as well that...
So the two names that are in here for reappointment will, they are not going to be reappointments. They're going to be someone to fill those two positions. And as you're saying, one of them's Kyrie Duckett and we'll have another name that will be listed on the agenda for next week. We've talked with Kyrie. So that's it.
So that's it. So you guys good? All right. Mr. Tisland?
Oh, and just to mention, and I don't know, did you say the snowball we're not doing tonight?
Oh, we're not doing snowball tonight.
Their request to come before the council is, they withdrew that request, so it was after the agenda went out.
Sometimes, Jim. All right, Mr. Tisland, before Jim gets me started. You're good? Antoinette?
I'm good.
John Phillips?
I'm good.
Jim Davidson?
I just want to thank everybody that volunteered to help at the Thanksgiving Day thing. That was terrific. Did a great job.
Well said, well said. Bishop?
I'm good.
City manager?
Remember the combined meeting with the planning commission on Thursday at 4:30 here? For those of you who can make it, we're doing the tour on Thursday morning. It'll take a good chunk of the day and I, hopefully, that's for the new council members to go see the different facilities. I can't remember the time that we start.
8:30.
So hopefully you remember.
It's 8:30, right?
At your place, out of Public Works, is where we begin. The only other thing, the parade this weekend was nice. It was neat to see the, besides all of our emergency services being, partaking in that, to also see Public Works had all our snowplows out on that. They looked really good to see the...
Those were Nick's?
Nick's.
Nick's snowplows.
Nick's.
Snowplows.
And the blades, neat to see the work that went in from the different schools to get those ready for this season, so. And Nick, did you have something you wanted to update the council on?
Yes.
I just wanted to discuss, I know it's...
The Nebraska-Iowa game?
Oh, I don't want to talk about it. That was pretty bad.
It was.
Not quite as bad as Notre Dame losing, but... Sling his mud, I'll sling it back.
56, no.
I know, that was bad.
We were gonna say, pause the camera, pause the camera.
I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I kind of maybe said something before the meeting. This is a sample section of what the design called for for our flood wall, the section of flood wall that you'll see. It is, if you can tell, it's some fins running up and down. We have a conference call tomorrow to discuss the form liner and how we're going to move forward. I just wanted to bring this to your attention in case there needs to be a decision made, potentially at the next council meeting, about a change of direction. I have some concerns about this aesthetic look. I was able to walk up to that section, able to pop off the thinnest fin there and I'm concerned about the long-term integrity of that look. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention that we might be bringing this forward in front of you next week. I probably should have a full meeting with the advisory committee that did this.
We had some other concerns with it too in regards to somebody painted, spray painted on it, the ability to...
Yeah, graffiti would be awfully hard to clean on this.
Is this the section that goes above?
This is going to be seen.
Correct, yep.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
This sits on top of the permanent.
The big mast wall. No, this is, this is concrete, this is the permanent wall. The stuff that goes on top of it is aluminum panels and columns. Yep. So just wanted to bring this...
Thanks for, yeah, thanks for...
I just want to make sure that we get what we want for the long term. We're spending a lot of money on this and I want to make sure that we're making good decisions, so.
And we appreciate you making sure that we're making good decisions.
Well, thank you.
If you can walk up there and ink it off, then what's the point?
Well, the other thing that concerned me would be graffiti would be almost impossible to get off there. So it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be smooth or something.
Big flat cer, well, not flat necessarily, but big flat surfaces of concrete tend to invite graffiti.
Part, and part of the concern that, I mean, what this does help to have if you have the, that fin look, you're going to have concrete sections that are different lengths and it helps, will help to mask where those join together. If we get a smooth surface, you're gonna not, not going to have that masking occur. So you're going to then see a pattern where the, where there's, you can see where the two, where the concrete sections match and they're not going to be evenly spaced. So that will have a funky look to it too. It's not like there's a real great wind to what the design comes out.
My suggestion was, and this is my lack of understanding of some of this stuff, but was in the paving outside on the front, the flat surface, we're doing some sandblasting patterning. I was hoping, thinking that maybe we could bring that up into the flood wall to make it look good, so.
Because we saw pictures of some of this months ago, I know.
You did.
What it would look like.
So I, we have a conference call tomorrow, so hopefully I have some more information. I can maybe update you prior to the meeting, so. And then maybe get, maybe get a decision in front of you next week if needed, so.
Thank you, sir.
What's, the question was, what's the height of the wall again, is it 48?
It's about 42 inches for most of it. There are sections that are open so that you can walk out over top of the river where there's railing around it. As you go further south towards the, where in between the auditorium and lift station, there was a boat ramp there, some of that will be a little bit taller as it starts to go west.
When you look at that, it looks like, I guess, about eight feet.
Yeah, it only goes up to my head.
It's not, it's not.
It's a perspective shot.
If you have somebody painting your snowplows, could you also have someone do murals?
Murals on the flood wall? I suppose we probably could.
He's trying to take one step ahead, this guy. Right on, right on. Thank you, sir. Linda Murray? You have anything you want to say tonight?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right. Just want to foreclose out, thank Ken or Cole for getting a haircut. It's about time. Again, want to say to Rob Sussman, we're going to miss you. You're not gone yet. And also, just good to see Rob Kreitzer in the audience tonight. Always good to see you, my friend. And just want to encourage everybody that has a business in downtown Burlington that if you don't have lights, flash in downtown, that we encourage you to light up downtown Burlington. The citizens are loving it, so I think that's all I've got. We're good to go?
I think Tanner being on the garbage truck is a good one.
Oh, yes.
I love you, man.
Tanner tries it.
All right, we're just finished. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
I love you, man.